Good evening and welcome to the December 17th, 2012 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's do a roll call, please.
Ms. Bogushevsky? Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, okay. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 12th, 2012, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the law of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: A) The matter to be discussed is negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association, personal matters and student matters. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're now in executive session. Okay, we're back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmud.
Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unspeakable evil visited Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut on Friday, and words cannot express the shock and sorrow shared by all of us in the taking of the lives of innocent children and their guardians. Our prayers and support go out to those whose lives have been devastated by this event. I ask that you join us in a moment of silence. On the agenda, we have correspondence, which is as noted in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a few moments with the board and with the public to talk about our response to the tragic events that occurred at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut. Over the weekend, we activated our crisis management teams for the purpose of providing support to our teachers as well as our students as they came back Monday morning, this morning. We were concerned that some of our children may have concerns, may have questions, may have fears, and we wanted to provide our staff with research-based, developmentally-appropriate interventions if necessary. We had counselors at all nine of our elementary schools prepared to receive students or staff that may need support during this difficult time. We also made sure that we put out instant alerts to our community so that parents that needed additional assistance could have resources available to them that can help guide them as they wish to speak with their children about the horrific events that occurred on Friday. We have, we've also tried to work very well together with each other, supporting each other. This event, I think, cuts to the core of educators and why we became educators. The events of that dreadful day teaches us that there is true heroism that occurred. We are now receiving reports that principal and teachers shielded children, and their efforts helped to ensure that there weren't more fatalities. So, we honor them, we honor their memories, we honor the children who are no longer with us. In terms of school security, we have, I have taken steps to meet today with members of the Police Department to discuss a process that we will continue to go through to evaluate whether or not we need to make changes to our security measures. We have done a great deal of work investing in additional cameras and taking other security measures, including participating in active shooter drills with our local police department. We work cooperatively with County Prosecutor's Office and other school safety experts in order to apply best practices in this particular area. We will continue to do so. If we need to make changes, those changes will be made. This is very solemn to have to talk about these type of issues. I'm sure that there will be national debates about gun control, about supporting the mentally ill, about violence in our society in general. As we continue through our national mourning for these children and the staff members at Sandy Hook Elementary School, I anticipate that there will be changes that will be coming. I want to thank our leadership team and our crisis management teams throughout the district who really worked tireless over the weekend to help to make sure that our transition back into school this morning was smooth. I personally went to all six elementary schools. I can tell you that most of the kids were okay, were fine. There were a few children that asked some questions and needed to talk in a safe place with our teachers or our counselors. This weighs heavily on our staff, but they were absolutely wonderful. And I spoke with many of them. Most of them just wanted to get back to work and do the good things that they do for the children of this community each and every day. Thank you, that's all I have to say about that issue. I do want to turn to some staffing changes that are going on. After 18 years of exceptional service to this district, Scott Rocco will be leaving us to move on to be the superintendent of the Spotswood District. I do have to say that working with him and very closely over the past few years have been exceptional. I can say just wonderful things about this gentleman. His integrity, his honesty, his care, his humanity, his support of the work that teachers do, his uncompromising passion for advocating for children will be a loss to this district and will be something that will be a benefit to Spotswood. I wish Mr. Rocco only the best. He is my colleague, he is a friend, and I know he'll be doing some exceptional things in Spotswood. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Rocco. And now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our new Assistant Superintendent, who'll be voted in today by our board, Mr. Guy Whitlock. Mr. Guy Whitlock is here with his wife and his son. Mr. Whitlock is coming to us from Montclair Public School System. He is currently the Director of Special Projects there. He has also served as principal and teacher, as well as assistant to the superintendent in Montclair. But education was actually his second career. His first career was the study of law. And he worked in the Public Defender's Office, and he has served as Construction Counsel, worked in real estate law, and his last position, practicing law, was as a staff attorney for Toys R Us. We are excited and happy to bring Mr. Whitlock onboard. He brings to us a unique skill set, and we're happy to welcome him. So with that, I ask for the board's unanimous consent to move the agenda item making the appointment for Mr. Whitlock to the floor at this time for board action.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Item B-86 of the action agenda.
So moved.
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Welcome aboard. Mr. Rocco? Mr. Rocco can't be replaced, only succeeded.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain, to have a five-minute recess.
Excellent. Thank you.
Continuing on in the agenda, we have no minutes to report. I'd like to invite the public to provide input on the 2013-2014 school budget. Okay. I'd like to solicit input from the public with regard to new business. Please state your name and address, please.
Dana Blevins, First Vice President of the Hillsborough Education Association. In light of the tragedy that Dr. Schiff spoke about with the Newtown District, I'd like to propose some simple changes to our security, as I know we are going to be examining our security around the district, but just some simple things that I think could be done to ensure some safety for the entire school community. One thing is, I think it's imperative that we change our locks in all the classrooms so that teachers may be able to lock their classrooms in an emergency situation from the inside. Right now, the way it works is if we get notice of something, we must go get our keys, go out into the hallway where the danger may be, stand in the hallway, take the key, lock the door, and then come back into the classroom. Very simple fix would be to change the lock, so there is a lock on the inside, so in an emergency situation, teachers could just simply lock the door from the inside without putting themselves or the students in danger. Second item would be for the Otten Road and Middle Schools to reinstitute the school resource officers as a full-time position in our schools, given all of the entrance and exits in both of those schools. We used to have them, it worked well. I think the added vigilance of having a police officer in the school at all time would help with that. And the third item would be, again, I think it may just affect the Middle School and Hillsborough Elementary School, having phones in the room for the PA system instead of the speakers. Right now, at the Middle School, if there is a situation, you need to press the button, wait for someone to answer and speak over the loudspeaker where everyone can hear what's going on, not only in a crisis situation, but also in confidentiality of the student situations that arise throughout the day, whereas in the other schools around the district, they have a phone, that it's a private conversation between you and the office staff. I think also that gives you the ability, if you cannot reach the office, you could actually call to a different classroom and let them know of a situation going on. I think those three things are very simple things. Maybe I should have mentioned it under the last item of budget proposals, but I think those three things are a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
Good evening, Board. I apologize for walking in on your executive board meeting. I just feel like I'm at home with you. My name is Sue De Senzo, 131 South Triangle Road. I'm a lifelong resident of Hillsborough. My parents have lived here for many, many years and farmed here where all of Mary Mother God Church used to be my grandfather's farm, so my heart is close and dear to this community. As a resident, a teacher of 22 years, and a parent in this district, tonight I would like to take the time to recognize and thank Scott Rocco, who is headed up our crisis emergency management team and has made sure that we are keeping our kids as safe as possible in our schools. In light of the tragic events on Friday, we know that there is more that needs to be done, but I am so grateful that we have a team that acts quickly, professionally, and with sensitivity. Mr. Rocco, you are a principal to my boys and an administrator and friend to me. You have been a blessing to us, and you will be missed here at Hillsborough Township School District. We know you will be a great success in your new position. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'd like to solicit comments from the public regarding the action agenda. Let's move on to committee reports. Mrs. Lay with the Education Committee.
Last Thursday, the Education Committee met, and we discussed new course proposals, the calendar, and approval of a revised curriculum that are listed in tonight's agenda. We approved three CP level physics, biology, and chemistry classes after listening to Mrs. Feltry, Supervisor of Science, described the courses. And so you understand, there are already other CP courses for chemistry, bio, and physics, but these will have more hands-on, and they will be inquiry-based or problem-based learning. So, this is something that it's actually what we do in the workforce. We think of a problem, and then have a hypothesis, and then we test the hypothesis. So, this is something that the Education Committee approved, and the other class was a Chinese Level 1 at the high school level. We had already discussed this as a board when we approved of the Chinese classes in the elementary school, just to refresh for you. In addition to the new courses, we had, we reviewed the curriculum that's also listed in tonight's education agenda, and I think sometimes we bypass it, but I'd like the public, students and parents, to take the time and look at the descriptions of these classes, because our district has a rich choice of courses that you can take, and it was very interesting to the Education Committee to review, like, courses like energy and power technology or architectural drawing. So, the only thing that we wanted to recommend was that when the, because now there will be two CP classes for both, you know, two different kinds of CP classes, so we asked that the description is clearly written so that students can better make choices when they decide. As far as the calendar, we had many issues to consider, so I'm going to outline those issues and let the public know that we cannot finalize the calendar until the second meeting in January, and here's the reason why. There are, we discussed an ongoing concern of ours that elections take place in the elementary schools, so we proactively have looked at moving them out of the elementary schools into the high school, and Dr. Schiff has already discussed it with the township administrator, and they are pursuing that option. If we can do so, then there is no need for closing school on the second day or during the week of Teachers' Convention Week. And that, if you don't close school on Tuesday, that allows us to consider having school in session for the first three days of Teachers' Convention Week. What that does for us as a district is that currently there are only 10 educational days or 10 days that students have full time for learning, and we can, by doing that, we can add another three days in November. But these are things that we're pursuing, so we need to make sure that we get approval before finalizing the calendar. And, what was the other? Oh, the first week of Labor Day week, we need additional in-service days, so that's also something that we're discussing and fine-tuning. And then we would propose to the rest of the board a new or revised calendar for next year. Oh, yeah, and then Ms. Tracy Nurr, she described the Algebra 1 pilot program and the results of that. It's actually, it was very small n, so I don't really want to describe the results because we need to wait for more data, I think. But we could say that there were some differences between the pilot students and the non-pilot students. Does anybody want to highlight that?
If I may, just in terms of the testing that was done academically for the children that were in the one-to-one Fuse Pilot, which were children that used individual computer devices, the iPads for the most part, that they did, they had better achievement scores than the rest of the children who were taking Algebra 1. But as Ms. Lay indicated, the n, or the number of students, was relatively small. We did do a test to determine whether or not the differences were significant. We saw one significant finding where the students on one particular chapter test did significantly better than their peers who did not have the benefit of an iPad. We also looked at attitudinal data as well. We did actually find more significant findings on the attitudinal data in terms of their experience with a textbook versus the Fuse, which is an online textbook, their access to resources at home, those also were significant findings. But I would caution us from drawing broad conclusions on small amounts of data. As the board is aware, we have broadened the pilot to 120 some kids at Aris, another 120 in the middle school, and about 240 children at the high school. So, given the fact that the n, the number of kids in the pilot that was studied was only about 40, we will have many more students within the pool that can allow us to draw better conclusions.
Yeah, and just going back to the calendar issue, for the polling places, we've historically had problems with Hillsborough Elementary School with regard to traffic issues, so that was one concern, as well as the security in the elementary schools, and that was the driving force to consider the high school as a polling place. And the last item on the Education Committee meeting was that we reviewed the idea of reducing the number of credits in chemistry honors and physics honors. So, the idea was to go from two labs to one lab, and from seven credits to six credits. And we will continue to gather more data about scheduling. The initial response from the Education Committee is that in a science environment, it's really important to have as much lab time as possible so that the students have the confidence when they either choose that field or when they go into the workforce that they've had the skills needed for lab work. That's it. Well, just one thing, that we will meet this coming Thursday to finish up some ongoing items in the Education Committee so that we start the 2013 year in a good way.
Thank you, Mrs. Lay. Mr. Pulsifer with the HR Committee.
Good evening. We met last Thursday. We began with the Human Resources Matters. We started with a comparability analysis for the position of Director of Special Services in the district. I expect there'll be a recommendation from the committee for future action based on the discussion, but nothing at this time. There are two goals that Scott had as part of his goals and objectives and as part of the tied into the strategic plan that we were hoping to get final reports from Scott before he departed, and we did get those and we reviewed those, and they'll be made available, if not already, to the board members. The first report was on recommendations for the library and media center usage in the district and moving that to much more of an active role in the educational process, both in terms of staffing and in terms of the educational impact, so we went over that with Scott. The other goal that he had that we needed to report on was the Plan for Administrative and Support Staff Professional Development, and Scott also delivered that final report to us at the committee meeting. And the last item from the Human Resources perspective was a discussion of procedures for lost time due to Hurricane Sandy, and the days that the buildings were all closed, and that will be future action also from the committee. At that point, we switched hats to negotiations. We had a discussion with the administration about proposals and ideas for the upcoming negotiations with the HEA and prepared for a briefing with the full board at tonight's executive session, which we did have, and that was all we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. For the Operations Committee, I'm going to pinch-hit for Greg Gillette. The Operations Committee met Wednesday, December 12th. Greg, Gillette, Jen Haley, Judy Haas, and I participated. There were four main areas. First was on energy audits. So there were detailed energy audits were performed on six buildings, including the high school, middle school, Aris, and then three elementary schools. All audits have been approved by the BPU, the Board of Public Utilities, and they included items, included energy savings and also capital improvements. So, not only looking at ways to make the buildings more efficient, but also looking at other capital improvements to have a comprehensive assessment of our facilities. Also included in that were discussed funding options, including ESIPS, which is Energy Savings Improvement Plans, and also a Do-It-Yourself ESCO. And these are two different, these are different funding programs. So the ESIP is essentially, make sure if I get, correct me if I get it wrong, but it's a third party. They have, they require verification that you have energy savings, but if you're able to demonstrate that you have savings that can be recouped within 15 years, they provide you with the capital, and then you pay back the capital and interest over that time while you're certifying that you are indeed providing those, or achieving those energy savings.
Mm-hmm.
So that is one way to do it. Another way to do it is to actually go out for a referendum, post a bond, borrow the money, do it yourselves, and then you recoup the savings on your own. Discussions on the funding. Can we make recommendations? The committee recommended to pursue the ESIP pathway, and then there will be additional details on what an ESIP is and the actual energy audit and the different programs that could be provided at a later time. The second item was on records maintenance for the school district, was discussed, and among those were scheduling of destruction and disposal of records that are, hit the timeline where that is required, and also possible scanning and digitization of our current records. No action was taken on that, and that's also for future meetings. We reviewed the energy efficiency of the HVAC unit in last week's bid was reviewed, and there is a rating called the SEER, which is a seasonal energy efficiency ratio for the unit that was proposed in the bid that was postponed last week. It's 16, it's typically 14 to 18. So the architectural firm reiterated its choice on that unit, which the Operations Committee agreed and is on the action agenda tonight. Lastly was- Lastly was, and this is a part where I departed the meeting, was with regard to our architectural firm and, and engineering firms. And I'll let Mr. Mahmud explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. There, there have been some concern about the engineering company that our current architect is using. And as a result of some of those concerns, Dr. Schiff and I were able to meet with SSP, our current architect, to talk about our concerns. The engineering company that they are using or have, has been in the news over the last couple of weeks, actually months, and there have been some indictments and some criminal charges that were brought against that company. So Dr. Schiff and I talked to SSP about our concern about that, and the Operations Committee as well brought that to the surface. And that, I think the conclusion to that is that the Township and the Board of Ed or the Operations Committee was not comfortable using that engineering services as a subcontract to SSP, which is our architect. And we expressed that, so the probability of us using them in the future will not happen.
I think the, the architect I represented from SSP indicated that this board, they will not use the, the engineering firm for future projects for the Hillsborough Township Board of Ed.
And that's it for the Operations Committee. Any discussion with regard to the committee reports? Mr. Pulsifer?
It's probably a little early since we're not voting on it, but I would like to just mention in terms of, to me, and you mentioned about the lab courses. I, I definitely think that's a critical component in the advanced science classes. And I hope that we definitely continue to keep that, the two lab sessions as part of those courses, especially as you get to the more advanced sciences. It's, the lab work is critical to understanding the, the scientific material, and I think we need to have the double, the two lab sessions.
I agree with that. Mrs. Lay?
Yeah, regarding the operations report, I, I defer to the Operations Committee, but I did take a look at the attachments. And what I, what I, overall, I'm just concerned if it says that some of the equipment is in good shape, and then there was a recommendation to replace. I could be misunderstanding, but I, I would not want to replace equipment that's in good condition.
Are you talking about the individual audits?
Yes.
Yeah. So they, those, in their, in the reports, there's a list of multiple different projects that could be performed, what it would cost, what the energy, energy savings would be, and how long it would take to recoup those costs. So the, the purpose of, of that report was to be comprehensive. If you wanted to, for example, put on a new roof, this is what it would cost. The payback is, I think it was tens of thousands of years because there's really no energy efficiency that you can get from a new roof. But they wanted to be, they wanted to be thorough in terms of what are, what's the whole breadth of, of capital improvements that could be made so that if somebody asks, well, why didn't you consider this, this to show that, that it was being proactive and comprehensive. So the, 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 what would come up next would be a recommendation for which of those projects should be included into an ESIP. So it could be a portion of those, it could be all of them, it could be, you can, we can set the, we can set the parameters. So we can say, we're interested only in, in projects that are going to have, that are going to recoup within five years, within 10 years, within 15 years. That's, but they wanted to be comprehensive in terms of what of all the, all the possibilities were.
So it's more like an inventory?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for the board's consideration for the following motions under the area of education to approve the professional travel related expenses, the HIB investigative list, the overnight field trips as listed, the revised curriculum, and field trip destinations, as well as new course proposals.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A6 of the action agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following agenda items that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources. The resignation, the retirement, leaves of absence, revised long-term substitutes, contract changes, rescinding of contract, approving revised mentor list, approving transfers and change in assignments, and the appointments of teachers, long-term substitutes, instructional assistants, substitutes, mentor, interim assistant superintendent for personnel. Please note that there was a typo, said of a salary of $475 per day, it's $575 per day, which equates to 260th of, or the per diem rate for our current assistant superintendent for personnel. To approve the substitute teachers, approve the resolutions as listed.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B10, excluding item B8.6.
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move the board accept the items as listed in the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mrs. Haas?
I'd like to separate out 8.7.
8.7, okay. Mr. Pulsifer?
Separate B4.
Any other discussion? Okay, so this is, sorry. Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, I see no reason to pay $575 a day for an interim assistant superintendent for personnel. I see no day, no reason to authorize 60 days. 60 days times almost $600 is $36,000. And frankly, I don't see the value of an interim being the same as the value of somebody who's been in that position for a long time. I just don't see the value to the district. And I would at least like the board to limit that to 30 days because that's the nature of the absence. Regular employees take time off, you know, whatever vacation schedule they have. I don't understand why we can't, A, do without, or B, at least limit it to 30 days, and B, I don't accept that salary.
Well, I'm confused as to where we are because I thought we were separating out 8.7.
Excuse me?
I thought we were separating 8.7, so I wasn't ready for a discussion on that one.
We are.
Okay. You want to continue discussion now?
Yeah.
Okay. There is a lot of work going on right now. As everybody's aware, we have the new teacher and administrative evaluation systems coming online. There's a lot of training necessary to, both for the administration and for some of the teachers who will be working into the process and I believe involved in training other teachers as we go forward. There's also a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of bringing those systems online. So the Human Resources Committee certainly felt that, that we could not afford to have nobody in that position when that critical work is going on. We have to get the training done now, this, the early stages of the training to get the other training done on time. So I, we felt strongly that we needed to have somebody in that position. As to the 60 days, that's, that's a cap. The requirement is that guy give, Mr. Whitlock, give 60 days notice. He could be released earlier by his current district, but the longest we would have to wait would be 60 days. So the, that 60 days is just a cap. If Mr. Whitlock was, was released earlier by his district, then we would end the interim. So that's, that 60 days is a cap. It depends on how long. But we didn't feel that we could afford to not have somebody in that position taking care of all this work that we need to get done.
The individual, the individual is a retired superintendent who frankly was not working as a superintendent when this evaluation process was created. So I just don't understand the value to the district.
I would say that probably nobody who's available to be an interim was active when this is being designed, since this has all been put together in the last year. So we would have to get somebody who just retired just now in order to get them in. But I'm certain that as a former superintendent, he's been, had significant involvement in doing evaluations. So he brings to the table or to the office as much experience really as we have in that same area, since this is new to all of us. But he certainly has the experience as a former superintendent with evaluation, working with teachers, working with the associations, working with administration. He brings all that to the table, so I think there is value there.
Respectfully disagree.
Mrs. Lay?
When we set the, the hourly rate or day, or actually daily rate, is that like a, based on competitive? Is that based on what, what we?
It's based on what we're, basically, it's based on what we're currently spending. I, I don't know exactly what might go on in, in terms of the educational community. But in most jobs, if you, if you brought somebody in to do short-term work, you end up paying more, more per day or per unit than you would pay if you had them on, you know, bringing in an employee versus bringing in somebody for short term, you end up paying more. That's, that's the nature of just about any business. So to me, staying at the same per diem rate is what we're currently paying, it's a reasonable number. We're getting what I think is certainly, you know, approximating the, the same level of experience and knowledge base that we're getting. It's not like we're getting somebody with no experience and paying them that level. We're getting somebody who, for, for all I know, may be making even more than that as a superintendent. So I, you know, it's, it's hard to put a number on this. My view from a, from a business perspective is typically when you make this, you are in a position of needing short-term help, you usually pay more for it. So I don't think this is a, a bad number.
I'd, I'd like Dr. Schiff to, to clarify on the per diem rate.
Yeah, it, it is customary when you hire an interim, regardless of the position, that you pay the per diem rate of the person who is, who you're replacing. But to, to Mrs. Haas's point, she, she is correct that, that they shouldn't be compensated at the same rate as the person that's coming on in. This particular per diem rate does not include any benefits, does not include personal days, sick days, vacation days. If the person works, they get paid. If they don't, they don't get paid, no healthcare benefits. So actually, in terms of a budgeting process, it's slightly less than what we would be paying if Mr. Rocco was continuing that position.
May I?
Mrs. Haas?
I think what people are failing to recognize is that this individual is already collecting a pension and lifetime health benefits by virtue of having retired from the school system. So as a taxpayer, I feel that a substantial amount of money is already going to this individual and therefore could be subtracted from the per diem rate because they are already getting health benefits from taxpayers. Just my opinion.
All right, thank you. Okay. So we'll be voting on items B1 through B3, B5 through B8.5, and B9 through B10. Okay, so everything excluding B4, B8.7, and B8.6. Okay. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B4 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Abstain.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B8.7 on the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the monthly, the monthly financial reports, the monthly bills list, line item transfers, the awarding of the bill, of the bid for the HVAC Hillsborough High School replacement, which was, which was postponed from the last agenda. And, and finally, approve the donation of musical instruments to the Hillsborough Township School District.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C5 of the action agenda.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Just a thank you to Mrs. Walsh for the musical instrument cases in music stand.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
And Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yep.
And Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, that's the end of the action agenda. I'd like to solicit public comments on old business. Any old business from board members? Mr. Pulsifer?
This is probably my last chance to embarrass Scott, so I will. I, I've had the honor of, of being involved in this district, thanks to the public support and involved in various committees since late 90s. We'll just leave it at that. One of the first persons I got a chance to work with in this district as part of the Long Range Strategic Planning Saturday Morning Crew was Mr. Rocco. And I have run into him off and on in different capacities along the way as he's had his meteoric rise through the district. And at every step of the way, he was a professional. He was often working not just with the administration and teachers, but with, with the public. He always represented the district in a way that the public viewed quite positively. I'm very happy for Scott and his opportunity to move on, but I'm saddened that this district is losing somebody who has spent so much time and done such quality work in this district. So thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Any other old business from board members? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Marie first. Marie first? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Abstentions. We are now adjourned. Thank you.